Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Killian. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, really glad to hear today.
We are, we're also excited to have the one and only Colin here with us. Hey Colin, good to have you.
How you doing everyone?
So we're excited to have you here today because we are going to be talking about a tool that we have created for you that you can use to make content creation easy. As a brand partner, you are yourself a brand and it's important for you to show up out there in the world with content so that people can find you. And this doesn't have to be very complicated, but it does need to be congruent with who you are, what you value. And of course, ultimately, what that looks like for the people that you would like to attract to you to become your future customers. So we're going to get into what it looks like today to engage in just a five to 10 minute a day activity that can allow you to have access to an abundance of ideas and templates to work from for the content that you need to create. So we're going to get into that here today. I have some slides prepared for you and some tools. While I get that set up, why don't you guys head over into the chat, say hello, let us know where you're coming in from. Our team's going to pop out a video, but come on back once we are done with today's training. Again, we welcome you, we're excited to have you and we are live every Thursday at two, sorry, noon, US Eastern Time. Where anybody who is a brand partner, who wants to work smarter and grow their young living business can learn a little bit more about how to do so and of course, learn how to use Get Oiling to do it. Hello everybody, welcome. I could see you guys are coming in from everywhere, excited to see you. All right, so today we're talking about how to create and use something called a swipe file. If you know what a swipe file is, then this might seem obvious to you. But let me tell you, even if you are somebody who knows what this is and uses one, you might not be using it the way that I'm going to share with you today. And if you are, you're going to see how much time this will save for you and make things so much more organized. So if you have questions, by the way, for today's call, regardless of whether they pertain to this topic, please feel free to add those to the Q and A. Our chat can get a little busy and it's easy to miss questions. So just make sure if you have a question to ask that you're popping that into the Q and A live here on the call. And if you'd like to work with us on a future call, we actually reserved the second half of these calls to work one-on-one with anyone who would like to. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession is where you go to sign up for these calls. And if you'd like to work together on a call like this, that second half of the call I just mentioned, GetOiling.com/web site review is where you're going to want to go to reserve that time. And if you would like to just hand off your ideas to someone to get them done for you, that is also an option. GetOiling.com/concierge where you can go to learn about our incredibly talented team and set yourself up for a no obligation conversation about the project you have in mind. All right, let me ask you guys, head over into the chat, let me know, where do you find inspiration? When you know that you need to create content, right? So you need to make a post, you need to send an email, maybe you want to do something that's educational. Where do you, where do you find inspiration? What does that look like for you? Do you scroll Instagram? Do you, do you check your inbox? Do you go to Pinterest? What does that look like? Where does your inspiration come from? Or do you have no idea where to look and that's why you're here today? Also totally fine. All right, we're going to get into all of that here today. So a swipe file is your personal inspiration library. Swipe is exactly what it sounds like. You're grabbing something and you're placing it in a space for you to be able to reference in the future. So that's what swipe is, your swipe file is your personal inspiration library. It's a collection of examples and ideas that inspire new content for you. This is going to include your emails that you send out to your leads and to your customers, the headlines that you use for those emails or for your blog posts, if you're blogging. If you're, if you're podcasting, this is your ideas for your podcast content, for your YouTube videos, designs for your website, designs of posts that you create on social media. All of this stuff is where you collect inspiration, right? How many of us see something sometimes and we're like, oh, that would be a really cool thing. And then maybe you capture some element of it or you completely derail and distract yourself to go try to implement it, right? A swipe file is what solves these problems. It provides a space for you to collect this stuff so that you can act on it in the future, right? And organize it in a way that is useful to you moving forward. And I think a really important thing to note, if you're new to digital marketing and creating content, a swipe file literally is copying and pasting something someone else did, okay? That you found effective or that you liked. But what we're doing with this is not about copying what they did. It's about gathering inspiration for you to do something new, right? So this is not about copying, it's about adapting. All right, so swipe files are really important for you as a brand partner because it's going to save you time, right? When you need to create a new blog post, you need to create a new email, you're making a landing page, whatever that looks like for you and what you're creating, you don't have to start from scratch because you'll have words to work with because you've saved them. You'll have screenshots to work with because again, you've saved them, right? You can also of course spark creativity. Your writer's block will be non-existent if you've got this targeted inspiration in place. You're clear on what it is that you want to gather and then from there you can easily be inspired on what to create next. Also, this helps you to stay consistent. One of the most difficult aspects of content for a personal brand or any kind of brand is consistency. The reason why we create content is so that we have a breadcrumb trail all around the internet world for people to make their way to us, right? And for when they find us, these people who don't know us, for those people to say, oh wow, that's my person, right? That, that is, that is someone that I like, that's who I like to hear from. I want to subscribe to them, I want to follow them, I want to potentially work with them, take their recommendations, i.e. buy Young Living from them, right? So staying consistent is the most challenging part of this because most of us don't logically connect the fact that we've got to be building that breadcrumb trail and we have to be consistent with building that breadcrumb trail if we want it to work, right? What we know is that we want to sell some oils right now and we want to find the people who are ready to get oils right now. And there are ways to do that through prospecting, but through content creation, which is a passive exercise to build your brand. This is something that because it takes work and it doesn't have a perceivable immediate payoff, we often set it aside. If you have a swipe file and you are collecting content into it consistently, it will be easy for you to consistently create good content. And then finally, working smarter. This is going to, your swipe file allow you to collect examples of what is working right now and allow you to be inspired by that for your work. Now, if you need a little bit of help with writing engaging emails and posts to connect with your audience or finding inspiration for sales pages or promotional campaigns or even just organizing your ideas and inspiration for what you do in the future, you need a swipe file and you need one like the one we've created for you. So this is how it works. When you are in your email inbox and you see a subject line that catches your eye, you copy that subject line and you paste it into your swipe file so that you can use that as inspiration in the future. If you see a social post that someone made that you want to use as inspiration for future content, you see that, you say, oh my gosh, that resonates so perfectly with the person that I want to be reaching, let me grab that, right? You're going to save that image or screenshot that post and put it into your swipe file. If you love the way an about section or a landing page looks on someone's website and you would like to someday sometime create something that functions similarly to that, again, grab a screenshot, grab the link, put it into your swipe file. And what I want you to do is just do this five minutes a day, right? If you spend five minutes a day just paying attention to, oh, that's really good, let me grab that. And you just do that for five minutes a day, you will never run out of great ideas for you to be able to create new content. And look, this is more than just collecting, we're not just grabbing ideas and dumping them somewhere. Because if we're just grabbing ideas and dumping them somewhere, they're not going to be useful to us when we need them, right? It's important that we are collecting this stuff in a useful way. This isn't just a can to throw this stuff into. It's a system for collecting inspiration and planning the content that you will ultimately create. So let's go and check out the resources that I've created for you and then get into our live help and Q and A section of the call. So right over here is our swipe file starter checklist. This was sent to you by email if you're on our list. We, I guess can pop a link to this in the chat as well. I would, I will put this in the description below our YouTube recording as well. So basically this checklist is here for you to remind yourself, get clear on what your swipe file is for and the steps that you need to follow to utilize the swipe file and content planner that we've created for you. This begins with utilizing a software called Trello and you can have a free Trello account to do this, this isn't going to cost you anything. You can use the free Trello to do this. So you're going to create a free account with Trello and then you're going to log yourself in. Then you're going to click this link right here that says swipe file and content planner. And that's going to take you straight to a template board that I have created for you. And you can actually see, you need to be logged in to do this. So I am not currently logged in and this is what it will look like. And let me just go ahead and I'm going to log in on a different screen here and show you what this looks like. So what we're doing here in this document is we're kind of going through what it looks like for you to utilize this resource. So what I want you to, to obviously first, I want you to make sure that you're logged in. Then click and open it and then you're going to be able to create a board from this template. Oh, awesome. This is actually, all I had to do was click a button. Hold on just a second, I'm going to bring this back over so we can look at this together. Okay, so I have a lot of Trello boards, but this is one that is available for you as a template. I'm going to create a board from template. And I'm going to save it into my workspace and I'm going to name it appropriately. I'm going to keep all the cards and the template cards and I'm going to click create. Now I've provided some examples for you. All right, so here we go. And again, you can have a free account and use this. So here's how we're going to use this board. There are three sections in the beginning and, and these are here in the beginning of this board. Because how you'll use this over the long term really has to do with how you use these three columns. But just a quick refresher here, if you aren't familiar with Trello, these are all called columns, right? Or I think that's the formal name for these columns in a cam board. But, and these are called cards, right? These things are called cards, you can reorder them, you can move them, right? I have created for you, there are some very specific cards that are here that are templates and it actually says this card is a template. And you're going to be using those templates to actually create your content. Now, before we get too far down that rabbit hole, I want to make sure that you understand where your stuff goes, right? So if you see an email and the subject line is this and you say, oh, I really like that. I would like to add that subject line to my board so that I can maybe use this in the future. Then I am going to copy and then paste it. So I'm actually going to go find, here's an email from Get Oiling, I'm going to copy. You can't see this because I'm in my email inbox right now. I'm copying a headline and I'm going to come over here to create from template under email ideas. I'm going to click create from template, email ideas template and I'm going to say subject line. And then I'm going to paste. And I'm going to create that card. And now I'm going to open it up and there's a lot I can do here. Now I can add images here, I can add descriptions here, I can give myself notes for how I might like to use this, right? And there is a checklist here as well, right? So what I have done is to begin by copying and pasting subject lines and body copy into this card as desired from emails in your inbox. Attach images if applicable. So there are no images, I really just liked the subject line. So I'm just going to check that off and then I'm going to add some labels to this to indicate categories such as the type of content that I might want to be talking about, right? So let's just say for instance, my focus, even though Young Living can help anybody, my focus is really on helping moms of young kids and dog lovers, right? Though those are like, those are my main, that's my main use case for Young Living, that's how I use it the most and it's the most I want to really be talking about, right? When if I show up on social media, I'm talking about babies, I'm talking about dogs, I'm talking about wellness for babies and dogs, right? So in that case, I'm going to actually go over to my labels here. And where you see content silo, I'm going to show more labels. Where you see content silo, I'm going to replace content silo with, like I'm going to edit this and I'm going to call this babies. Right? And then I'm going to go to another content silo, show more labels. Here's my number two, I'm going to edit that and I'm going to call this dogs. Then I'm going to go to another one again where it says content silo. I wish that these actually showed up in the order that I created them, but it doesn't. Here I'm going to talk about wellness and this will be general wellness. And then finally, here's my content silo four, maybe I'm also going to talk about non-toxic living. Right? So those are the main things that in my content I'm going to be talking about. And you'll also see that these labels that I've already made for you are going to apply to the ways that you'll use this board, right? So if you have inspiration for YouTube content, if you have inspiration for your website, for blog posts, for social, if you want to specify that this is for Instagram, right? Or if this is just generally an idea for long form content, so this could be a podcast, it could be YouTube, it could be a blog post, right? Social media generally, or is it Facebook or is it Instagram, right? So all of this is here and I've even included tags and you can add more of these for things like call to action, like if I really liked the call to action in this email, then I might, I might want to apply this tag. So maybe this email had a great call to action, so I'm going to be filtering for that. And maybe this is a subject that is also about non-toxic living. So maybe I'm subscribed to an influencer that talks about non-toxic living. They send emails and this one that they sent to me today had a really great call to action and I liked the subject line too. And so when I read their email, I said, oh man, if I could sound like this, when I send something out to my people, I would be doing so well. That's what this is for, right? So you paste all that information in here and then you add these filters. And the thing is, that's what the, or sorry, these tags that allows you to filter. So maybe I just want to find the stuff that's talking about non-toxic living. Voila, there they are. Maybe I want to find the things that are only email related. Of course, those are in the email stack, but maybe I want to find a label that is specifically for, let me see if I want to find only things that have maybe a call to action that I really like. So there's all my inspiration for calls to action, right? So that's why we're using these tags. So you're going to, the steps for doing this are when I find something that inspires me, maybe it's a website, so let's just, I'm going to go to GetOiling.com. So I went to GetOiling.com and said, oh my goodness, goodness, I love the way that they have this lead magnet positioned on the homepage. I'm going to grab a screenshot of this and I'm going to go to right here, this website copy and design. I'm going to choose the website copy and design template. And this is going to be a lead magnet website section. And I'm going to pop in here and I'm going to grab that screenshot that I just took. And that's going to be, let me find that real quick, it's on my desktop. Here we go, I'm going to drag that in. That's going to attach to the card, voila, there it is. And I'm going to add in the URL. GetOiling.com and then I will put here idea for lead magnet and copy. And so let me go ahead and save that. I'm going to add some labels, this is show more labels, this is going to be design, obviously. Maybe I like the call to action here, right? And maybe this, this lead magnet that's being offered is about babies and general wellness, right? So I've added those tags, I've added the screenshot, I've given some information here and let me just go ahead and check these off, okay? Because I added labels and I put the information onto the card. All right, so what if I am ready actually to start creating my lead magnet in this case? Well, here is what I'm working on, so I'm actually going to drag this over. So I want to create this content, right? I'm not doing it yet, but here's my planning, right? So what I want you to do is maybe once a month, I want you to sit down and think about, you know, what your long form content is going to look like. And you need to be, that's one of the most important things you need to be collecting. You do need to be collecting social media ideas, but 100% be collecting long form content ideas. Think blog posts, YouTube videos, podcasts, things like that, that you could be putting out there to really set yourself apart from everybody out there on social media, for instance, who's creating noise, right? You can stand out by being someone who is creating something with greater substance. So you grab these ideas and you are going to be creating cards again, like from the template here. And so this would be a blog post and then the idea is a three-part series on, maybe you saw somebody did this on, on pets and wellness. And then in this, you would go in and you would put the URL to those posts and maybe they're, you know, the titles of those blog posts, maybe some images that inspire you. You would build this out and if this is what you're ready to do when it's time, we move it over here to content ideas, right? Now, when we are ready, so we gather our ideas first, this is your planning, right? Right here, content ideas, this is where you plan. This is where you say, I've got four blog posts here and that's going to be for next month, I've got a new lead magnet that I'm working on. I wouldn't overload this ideas section. Now, when you start working on this, we're going to move it over to our drafts and progress. So let's go ahead and open up our card here, I'm ready to start working on my lead magnet. So I moved this to the content ideas column, right? When I'm ready to start using it. And when I'm ready to create content based on this, I'm going to move it over to drafts in progress. So maybe what I'm going to do here is, is actually, I'm going to hit enter a couple of times and I'm going to say, I'm going to put in some copy for myself, right? So this is lead magnet is going to be three ways to help your newborn settle in at home, right? So this is like after you get home from delivery and like here, here are the things that you might want to prep for. And then copy, obviously you put your copy here, I have now started making this my own, right? Helpful if I could spell, okay? So, so I started putting all my stuff in here, right? And so now this means this is a draft in progress, I'm going to move this over because I'm working on this. Only when you begin changing, right? So you're, you're taking the inspiration from what you found that you put onto this card when you created it in the first place. When you begin making changes to that so that you can go and create whatever it is, that's when you move this over to draft, so this is what you're actively working on, right? And then finally, you can move it over here, once you have finished it, once it is published. So if I have scheduled, which I see that that is misspelled, let me fix that. When you, when you come over here, maybe you have published your blog post here. I'm actually going to apply a calendar date to this, so this is scheduled to post on the 20th. Right? And I'm going to click that off and show that this was posted on January 20th. Maybe I completed this and I'm going to add a date to this as well. This is when I put this lead magnet up, that's going to be on Friday. I am going to check that as done. And so now, everything that you have actually used, you can add a date to in this scheduled and published, me. Change this, it's going to bother me. There we go, the scheduled and published column, you'll be able to see when you've done what you've done. So if there is an idea that you have, maybe you're filtering for, for, for specific topics that you have covered in the past and you want to find all of the posts that you have been inspired by and the stuff that you've created that's talking about babies. Well, then you can click that and even if it's something that you've already published, if you did this a year ago, it may be time to go back and refresh that blog post, right? Or, or to, you know, to, to create some kind of a new thing, maybe a digest of everything that you've done, you know, hey, by the way, I'm talking about babies today. Here's, if I'm writing an email to my list, here are five things that I've talked about that talk about babies, right? So that is how you use this, you gather your inspiration and your inspiration is going to fall into four different categories. We've got ideas for sending emails, this can be for campaigns and for one-off emails that you send to your list. That could be your customers or your leads, your social media posts. Again, there's a template for that as well, for your long form content, that's going to be YouTube, blog, podcast. And then for your website, inspiration for how you want your website to look or what you want your website to say. Now, there is one other thing that I might encourage you to do and this is very specifically for you guys because as brand partners, we need to differentiate our lead content from our customer content, right? So when you think about sending out an email, when you're talking to your, your customers, you can say Ning Shu Red is great because it does this and that and the other thing. And you need to go check out Ning Shu Red right now, you get a special discount on it because you're a loyalty rewards member, et cetera, right? You can say that to your customers, but if you said the same thing to your leads who don't use Young Living, you're wasting your breath, right? You're wasting your email credits, you're wasting your time. So you want to make sure that how you're gathering information and how you're distributing information is through the correct lens, right? So if I go through, let's just say for instance, I want to make sure in my labels that I, I'm going to create a label and I'm going to make it this one and it's going to be a customer content. So if you have, maybe if you find some kind of inspiration to share how to use a product or if you find and like to collect diffuser recipes, I would even make a label just for diffuser recipes, just to keep that separate as well, if that's something that you do. But this would allow you to specify as you are gathering content, whether or not it's something that you intend to be for your customers or for your leads more generally, right? Is that making sense? Let me know if you have questions. Camelia says, are you dragging moving items to the next, are you dragging by to move them to the next position? Yes, I'm selecting and then I'm just pulling it to where I want it to go and you can change the order and all of that, yeah. Just make sure that you don't delete or change unless you really want to, these templates. These template cards are how you create new content by coming right over here to create from template and selecting the category template that you want to use. And that again, is going to keep you on track because you're going to be able to be reminded. Oh, that's neat, I didn't know you could do that. Huh, you can click and, and then you can actually see exactly how to follow the system, right? So all of that is right here on the card. So make sure that when you want to add something, when you are inspired by something, that you don't just click add a card, just click create from template and select the one that applies best to your use case. All right, I see a question here from Camelia. When you refer to screenshot from your computer, are you using the swipe feature to swipe? Are you doing it somehow from your computer? I have a MacBook Pro. Yeah, so on a MacBook Pro to take a screenshot, you're going to go command shift three and it'll take a screenshot of your entire screen. Or you can say command shift four and do you see this little guy? You can take that and you can drag it and take a screenshot of exactly what you want. Hopefully you were able to actually see what I was just doing, but that is, that is how you do that. So screenshots I think are going to be really helpful for you, except for when you find content that is specifically an image. In that case, you would like right-click and then save that to your files and then of course, put that into your swipe file. All right, how much is Trello aside from the free version? I actually don't recall, I use the paid version because I do things like this, like I create templates and share them. And I use a lot of like power ups and stuff like that. I use this pretty exclusively, like this along with chat GPT, of course, for content creation and planning. So I will put titles into Trello, Greg put a link there, thank you in the chat, their website for their pricing. I use it, right? But I, I don't know that I necessarily would use the paid version if my business was only that of a brand partner, especially in the beginning. You will find as you start using it, if you really, if you really like how it works, you might choose to use it in a broader sense for organization. Brandy, if you work with private clients on large production projects done for you stuff and you need to collaborate, you're going to be obsessed with this, you're going to love this so very much, yes, absolutely. Yes, highly recommend it, they do have a trial, so. But yeah, no, I've, I have actually used Trello for that purpose and primarily for that purpose aside from content planning for a very long time. All right, Tammy says, in regards to using someone else's content, for instance, if you see another Young Living brand partner who's not on your team's content on Facebook and you love it and you would love to share it to your team, do we need to get permission? I see that often, but I don't want to be stealing content. So the purpose of a swipe file like this is to gather inspiration, not to collect things to push out later. Now, if you do want to use something that's verbatim, in, in, in this particular instance, maybe it's an image or something like that or a post that they've made, I would absolutely reach out to that person and get permission before you, before you do a copy paste situation, yeah. Yeah, hundred percent I would ask, uh, because there's a good chance that they paid for that, right? Uh, or that they put their own work into it. So if it's something that they would like to have available for anyone to use, uh, then you find out from them. Uh, but what the, the purpose of this is for, uh, is for you to have a starting point for your own stuff, right? And if you wanted to outsource, you could take your, you know, your, your board like this. Uh, and, and maybe even hire, uh, someone to create some images for you, right? Or use it, you know, with Canva or AI, obviously with AI, that's going to be really helpful. Uh, diffuser recipes. Yeah, so. I think that generally speaking, a lot of diffuser recipes that are out there, especially the image kind. Those are just sort of in the public domain. Young Living obviously creates them. Um, I would maybe create a Canva template of your own, uh, that is, you know, that has your colors. Your fonts, um, and then you can maybe use the diffuser recipes that you find, you know, this many drops of this, this many drops of that. Nobody's copyrighting that stuff, right? So I don't think that there's a great deal of, of issue with that, although it is going to be a best practice. Like for instance, for how they name it, I would do a quick little search. If it's something that Young Living named, right? If they're like walk in the woods, this many drops of this, this many drops of that. Again, nobody is copyrighting that. And if Young Living did it, they don't care if you use that. It's going to help you grow, right? Uh, so, um, stick with Young Living as a source. As a rule, I, I would say, because they have a lot of those. But if you just find one out there in the world and you could figure out maybe who the origin source was, it is a good practice to ask them. You know, is this yours? Should I be crediting you for this? Generally a good practice, but yeah, where, where those little diffuser recipe images are concerned, I don't think that that's going to be a huge deal. Um, let's see, I think I'll use it for organizing recipes. Yeah. Oh yeah. This is great for organizing all kinds of stuff. I, I love it because I live in outlines. Um, I create outlines for everything. If I'm creating a training for you guys, if I'm creating a course, uh, if I'm, you know, creating a scope of work. Uh, for a private client, like everything is going to begin in an outline because I'm a very process oriented person. And I think that work generally, if you aren't an artist and, and getting paid as an artist. Uh, work is a process oriented thing, right? So outlines are really good for this, but where you want to take your process oriented, uh, procedure. And, uh, and you want to make it more rich, right? So an outline is just some bullets or numbers. And, and, and some words, right? But what if I need to add some images in there? And, and what if I needed to be interactive in a particular way? Or what if I need to collaborate, right? That's where Trello comes in as being really powerful because you can structure it like you would an outline. Column, 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 column would be like top level bullets. And then all of the stuff that's inside, you know, is movable and, uh, can, uh, have additional stuff. Attached to it. And there's a lot more that Trello can do and that's kind of getting into the paid levels. I think that at the free plan level, you can attach like one power up. Uh, and the power up that I would recommend, uh, is the calendar one. And so that's where I was actually showing you, you could apply a date. Uh, to the, uh, to the card to indicate when it was published. Uh, so that you are clear on, on its publication, uh, maybe when you plan to publish it. Uh, and then of course you can reference that in the future. All right. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's great for feedback and getting personalization in there. It's, it's a really great collaboration tool. I don't do a whole lot of, uh, of private, like one-on-one work anymore, Brandy, but, uh, but when I did. Trello was almost exclusively like the, the hub for the ideation part, right? So like where I need to, um, have a document and have them like, you know, make modifications or whatever. Um, there's a lot of this that you can do and get oiling and vaults, uh, but where you can actually get a bird's eye view of everything. Uh, Trello is just really excellent for that. Let's see, as an artist, yeah, Jackie, I think that that would help, help as well for, for that purpose for sure. Um, is Trello like Asana? Perhaps Trello is simpler, uh, like the template. My understanding, I haven't used Asana, uh, Donna, but, um, I, I believe that Asana might be a bit more robust. And, uh, potentially more geared toward teams. Um, I could be wrong about that though. I've never used it. Um, but I, and my assumption is that you're correct is, is that Trello is very similar to Asana. I think Asana does work as a Kanban board, which is what, what Trello is. Uh, and I, I, I think that it probably is simplified. If anybody knows that for sure, uh, maybe let us know in the chat, uh, if that's the case. Um, I would love to know if you guys have any questions or if you would like to see a particular type of use case example of how we could go about doing this. Uh, invite you to, uh, to say so in the Q and A or the chat. What I'm going to do now is to actually. Uh, maybe go over, uh, back to our browser here. And let's talk about what it would look like, uh, to plan out our content using our swipe file, uh, in. Here in Trello, but actually moving into Get Oiling. Um, and also going back here to our checklist. Um, I ha- I have outlined kind of what the, uh, purpose is of each of your columns and what those content categories are. And I've also given you sort of a list of things to, uh, to look for and what to add. And just some, some general, uh, guidelines here. Now, uh, to publish, uh, something in, uh, and get oiling. Um, make sure you're following your best practices, remembering to use the swipe content for inspiration, not duplication, right? Make sure you're always adapting and rewriting your copy. Um, also really important here, it's easy to get this kind of stuff really, uh, jumbled, right? So be mindful, when you are saving something here, ask yourself, does this speak to the person I want to attract? Right? Is this representative of how I might want to show up? And what is the purpose that I would use this for? If you could be really clear on those things, then you will build a resource here that will be enormously impactful to you and help you to save a lot of time and be really effective, right? So make sure that you are thinking like your audience and asking these questions. Making sure that stuff that you save here is only truly resonant to you and what your, your customer needs. Um, and then, uh, you want to prioritize content that is attention grabbing, that solves a problem or, or ignites curiosity. And include some kind of a strong call to action, right? Uh, so those are the things that are going to be really helpful for you for inspiration. And again, as a brand partner. Can't say this, uh, more strongly. Make sure that you're creating a clear designation by way of a tag. Uh, in here, let me just click a tag and you can, how did I get it to do that before? Uh, here we go. Uh, make sure that you are specifying whether something is customer content. Because again, if you want to have a bunch of diffuser recipe content ideas, that's excellent. But is it excellent for generating leads or is it just for your customers? You want to make sure that you are being really clear and intentional about where your content is going to go, right? So creating a blog post, for example, which is for anyone on the internet to discover, read, learn more about you and potentially get started. It is better to talk about more general interest topics that would be of interest to them than to go on about the values. Of a young living product, the virtues of, of using a young living product and what it can do for them, right? Because nobody is going to just go to a blog post that's just about Ningxia, read that blog post and say, huh, I guess I'm going to go buy Ningxia from this person. Right? Because why would they do that? It's not really very compelling, but if you made a blog post that talked about the, uh, the fifteen day journey. That, uh, that, that set you on the track to losing forty pounds and, uh, you know. Recovering from whatever, you know, ill you were facing. Um, if they resonate with the outcomes you're talking about and you say, hey, by the way. All I did was use one product for fifteen days and incorporated a couple of specific steps in my routine. If you would like to learn more about this, here's where you can go. Now that, that's going to take that person that's on your blog post and it's going to get them onto your list. That's going to make them a lead for you where you can then have a kitchen table conversation about what Ningxia has really done for you. And then of course invite them to maybe take part in the fifteen day reset, right? All right, uh, let me get into this Q and A here. Is the template you're giving us already set up and we need to find content and then cut and paste under the categories? Yes. Yes, that's right. Uh, so what I would probably do is not copy the existing cards, but copy the templates. So when, uh, you follow those steps, so you're in Trello, when you click the link that's in the checklist. It's going to give you a button up at the top so that you can copy this into your own Trello workspace. And it'll give you a couple of checkboxes. I would only check the one that has the template cards because I've got these other ones in here as examples for you to work from. You could certainly keep them, just make sure like, you know, this image post from our attract well platform is not going to be relevant to your people. So you'll probably want to archive that, right? Okay, um, oh, thank you, Donna. Um, how to find and attract your target niche on social media or YouTube, about to start a YouTube channel. Oh, we've done a lot of this, Donna. Um, and it's some of our older content, in fact. So I would maybe go into your, um, into your success academy and get oiling. Let's, uh. Go right over here to our good oiling dashboard. So in your success academy. Under. Live training and replays. We can go here to lead generation. As a topic. And let's see what we come up with. Basically, from, from a philosophical perspective, the way that you attract people. Um, even if you see a video in here from six years ago, it's still going to be relevant. Because the principles of attraction, uh, with your content, uh, they, they basically stay the same as a brand partner. And the Cliffs Notes of it are, you need to map out, uh, those topics of interest to you. So the examples that I gave for this board were, you know, I'm, I'm speaking to basically new moms or young moms who are just getting their footing. Uh, about wellness topics, uh, and who probably also have pets. And so that's the sort of, it represents the range of things that I would be showing up and talking about. And then I need to kind of dig in and think of like get into their head, think about what are they looking for? What content are they following? Uh, who are some creators? Like you, you need to actually be a little bit of a consumer of content, uh, to get a really good idea about how to position yourself. So who, who do you figure they're following? Uh, who's taking up space in their feed, in their inbox, in their brain? Uh, and then you start coming up with solutions for them, right? Sharing tips with them and so on. Uh, so there's, uh, a lot here in the way of, of lead generation, attract new customers. Yep, never run out of leads. This would be one from three years ago, still relevant. Uh, so yeah, I, that's, that's the direction I would go. And also, um, we have a fair amount of that sort of thing on our attract well channel as well. It's going to be a little bit more advanced in a lot of cases. Uh, where the tech is concerned, um, and, and where the terminology is concerned. Uh, but that's one worth following as well. You can, uh, actually take advantage of, uh, a lot of the courses that are offered on attract well. If they're offered for free on attract while you as a good oiling user can have access to those as well. You don't need to have tracked well. Uh, you know, we are the same company, so that would be another, another place to look. All right, Camelia says, so we can take third-party info on a topic such as toxins or keeping stress, uh, stress levels healthy. Yes, absolutely. This is actually where you take all that third-party information and this is like your research gathering, right? Like you're, you're getting all the information that you want. So let's just say, uh, going back to. Our, our Trello board. Um. Here, we're here. Okay. Uh, so let's just say I actually have an idea. And I'm not going to base this off of a single piece of content, but maybe I have an idea for a, a piece of long-form content. And this is going to be a, um. Yeah, we're going to talk about, uh, healthy stress levels. And I'm not using swipe as a way to create this. But I am going to swipe into it. So let's just say for instance, there is a study. You want to paste the study here because you know you want to reference it. So study link. So it's a published study you want to reference. Uh, maybe there is a blog post from someone else. You can put that in here. Maybe there are some images you want to attach here as well. So if you have an idea for something that you'd like to do and you want a place to gather everything that you'll use, maybe you'll cite. Uh, or that you'll simply use as inspiration, you would put all of that into this one nice little card here. And then when you're ready to use it, you would move it over here to content ideas. Maybe you can go ahead and put a projected date. I would actually like to use this, uh, for March. I'm going to. Set this, I'm going to say, I'm going to get this done in March. Uh, so that's when I want to have this done. Uh, I'll begin working on it. When I'm working on it, I move it here. And then once it is scheduled for publication, uh, then we move it over here. Great questions, you guys. Uh, let's see. So yeah, if you access it, what you'd be looking for, for attract well is all going to be on the YouTube channel. So if you go to youtube.com/attractwell, uh, that's where you're going to find that. Anything that you see demonstrated on the attractive platform you can do on get oiling. Um, it's simply a platform, uh, that we created for non-oilers, right? So people who have other types of businesses, uh, where, uh, Young Living is not at the, the hub of it, uh, which is the case for you guys. So, um, but, but yeah, all the functionality you see there, you'll be able to, uh, to do the same thing on your good oiling account. All right. Any other questions? So many good questions here today, or if you want to see a walkthrough of, of creating, um, creating something, you could certainly do that as well. Let's just pretend, for instance, uh, and I'm going to come over to, uh, back to get oiling and go to, my apologies. I am going to change the account that I'm in before I do this. Okay. So I am in the Jane account now. In get oiling. And what I'll be doing is utilizing my, uh, maybe the work that I put into. Uh, here we go, healthy stress level. So this is my idea. And I know that I want to maybe build on this a little bit more, so I am going to go over here to my dashboard. And I'm going to go to write with AI and I'm going to tell it, I am planning to publish. A blog post on maintaining. Healthy. Stress. Levels. Uh. My primary audience. Are women. Uh, typically first time moms. Or moms of young kids. Who are also pet lovers, right? Uh, it's the example that I'm working with here today. Outline a blog post that shares, uh, helpful tips. Uh, cites. Published research. And makes a recommendation to. Take advantage of a. Free wellness consult with me. So let's give that a minute. It's going to come up with an outline for the blog post. And we decide if we like it, we decide if we don't. If we like it, I'm going to copy that to the clipboard. I'm going to pop back up here to write and I'm going to say, uh, write a blog post. Um, of at least. Uh, a thousand words. Using the following outline. Paste, write. And once that's done, we can actually, because we've got our ideation complete here. Once that's done, we're actually going to go over to our get oiling blog and get started with a draft blog post. And it will need a minute. It's coming up with a thousand word, uh, thousand word article for you. Here we go. I'm going to copy that to clipboard. And I'm going to come over here, uh, to my blog posts. And I'm going to write one. And here I'm going to, I can actually go right over here to, uh. Write with AI. And we could see our prior responses. If you forgot to copy, I'm going to copy the AI response. Right? And I'm getting a paste. Oops, that's not it. There's my prior responses. Uh, let me see. I need to redo this. Do you see how it, it actually? Oh no, actually I don't mind that. This is fine. So I'm copying the response. I'm going to paste plain text here. I'm going to go right here to more text, paste plain text. Paste and then click that. Now it's broken up into sections and this isn't ready to go out of the gate, right? So, uh, these, you know, with the stars, it's actually designating something that you need to address. So I'm going to make that the title. And. Here is my intro. And I'm going to again, address this one. It's calling action to me. I need to do something with this. This is a sub-headline. So heading to. And I can continue doing this throughout, right? So here's my heading two. This is going to be a heading three. And of course you can introduce, um, images wherever you like in here. And of course, you can introduce um images wherever you like in here uh and really, you know, make this your own, right? Have this look just how you want it to. Just make sure that you are using these um heading settings because these are doing actually a really important thing in the background for you um for your S E O, for your website. So for the, for people to be able to discover what you have created, having this, not just making it bigger or bolder, but specifically coming over here to paragraph format and selecting heading is going to help people who are searching for terms like these on the internet. It's going to help them find you more effectively, right? So this is our, this is section three. So this is a heading two. And isn't it great that you can just have something right for you? Kind of remove some of the questions and obviously you want to go in here and make sure that uh whatever you're putting in is accurate and is adequately speaking to the person that you want to connect with. But that's essentially what we would do here. And then we would want to go in and add any images that we prefer. We can actually ask A I to automatically generate an excerpt. Generally speaking, I like to give it more instructions than that, uh, but it is very simple to do, automatically write excerpt. And it goes right in. All right, let's see. Um, there's our summary. See, this is quite, it's it's a bit longer than I prefer. Uh, so I'm going to copy this to clipboard and I am actually going to uh go to write with A I. And I'm going to ask them to uh make this uh blog post summary more concise and um help the reader feel more compelled to click and open to read more. Okay, it's still on the long side, but I'm just gonna, I'm going to grab that and keep it. And I'm going to come right down here to this section here where we will show an excerpt. I will use that paste plain text feature so that it follows the formatting I've selected, the font that I've selected for my site. That's not so bad. Um, so yeah, then we can create a featured image. Uh, in this case, this is about maintaining healthy stress levels for moms and pet lovers. Uh, so let's uh, let's do this. So this is going to be twelve hundred by six thirty. So we are going to um use Canva to create this. Uh, so what I'm going to do actually is I'm just going to go right here. Image, Canva button, um, and that was twelve hundred by six thirty. Oops. I'll open Canva. And uh, and then we can create a, an image for this. Now Canva has A I, uh, let's go in here and uh see if if that can help us search more effectively. So under elements, uh, we are going to be looking for photos. And we will say healthy stress levels and start with that and see what we find. And I think that these are not, oh, beautiful. There it is. Perfect. Looking like a mom with a laptop and a yoga mat. It doesn't make a ton of sense. It's not the perfect thing. Uh, but we're going to set that as the background. I'll double click and adjust it to where I want it. And I will use this as the image, the featured image for this post. All right, so this is now a part of the excerpt. And uh, and then we would need to um not show the featured image on the post itself because I I like for it to um, I guess you can. I like, I like to actually format the image into the post itself. I've done some extensive trainings on this and and you guys could definitely reference those uh for the tips that that I have for this. Uh, but you would want to include the featured image, et cetera, add your blog categories. Uh, and then, of course, schedule this for publication and you're good to go, right? Okay, uh, Donna says, when I have A I uh create a suggested course of action, how do you suggest I store it into the person's contact part? So it depends on the course of action that you are planning to take. Um, generally speaking, I would maybe add a note under past actions. If it is something that you need to have top of mind when you communicate with them on an ongoing basis, then I would use the background info section, but it sounds like what you're talking about is going to be most applicable to uh to adding a note uh to their um to their card, which is going to look like this. Let me just pull up mine. And that's going to be right down here under past actions. We just go to add here. And then we can add a note. Right? And then you could, you can pop that in, and then you could also give yourself a to-do after this if there is uh something that you need to specifically follow up on or be reminded to do. Um, let me see. So um, Camelia, uh, do you ask A I to add images at the same time as the prompt? So hot take for me right now, A I for images is just kind of weird. I don't, I don't use A I for images. There are ways to do it, and you may, you may find a way that you really like. I haven't found one that I think looks anything other than just like it was put together by an alien robot, which it was. So um, so no, I will use uh A I powered search features, which Canva certainly has. They are utilizing uh a lot of different tech, not just A I to, you know, generate the the results that you get when you search for something. And Canva does have an image generator as well. So um, yeah, I mean, if you want a picture with somebody with six fingers and two noses, like you don't even have to ask for it. You could just ask for a picture of a person doing a thing and it'll give you something really weird. So if you want something weird, use A I for images. Um, yeah, and what I did with Canva there, if you just type in a keyword, you'll generally find what you're looking for. Uh, and and you can get really specific as well. So if you wanted to say, instead of putting in workout as the key word, uh, you could say uh woman working out, right? Uh, or mom working out or something like that, and it'll, it'll help get you a little closer uh to the result that you're looking for. Awesome. Thank you, guys, for coming and asking so many great questions. Let us know what you are interested in learning about next. Uh, come find us in our Facebook group. And uh, of course, I look forward to having you here on one of our live calls again in the future. Uh, let's go get some content created, get some planned and start gathering some inspiration to do so. Uh, look forward to seeing you on next week's call. Have a great week, everybody.